This is the Great Republican City Council of the Congress Yanghui Notice of 2014, which was filed on the City Clerk's office and posted on the board to board on December 27, 2013. It was sent to the Star Ledger, Home and Tribune, all the lines of information to all public meetings, all the journals. Go call please.
Councilwoman Perkins Dusty?
Aye.
Councilman Questa?
Here.
Councilman Torres?
Here.
Councilman Gonzalez?
Here.
Councilman Keenan?
Here.
Councilman Sedanier? Councilman Gollman?
Here.
Councilman Mazza?
Here.
President Grover?
Here. The members president. At this time, I ask that we please rise and councilmentors need his prayer and pledge their allegiance.
Almighty God, have we legislately for our community made a strong sense of justice and fair play in serving all that we do. Above all, may we seek out your humble vote. Give us this method followed, regardless of all you consider.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in common.
Thank you council. At this time, I move on to public speaking. Sir, any member of the audience wishes to address the council, any matter, please step forward. State your name and address.
I'm here today because of the news media about all these census murders that's going on within our city and a lot of people like Mr. Ishmael Solam, as we know him, has been blaming the Littlewood Police Department and the mayor. I am no fan of the Littlewood Police Department, but I don't think that all the blame should be put on them about the census murder. There's people that saw something, but they won't say anything. So how can the Littlewood Police Department start investigating on homicide when they have no lead? It takes the community to open up, to let the police know who was involved. And so I don't think that the Littlewood Police Department should take all the blame on what's going on within our city. Also, Mr. Solam also said that the mayor is still denying that there's a gang problem in our list. Well, I believe that our mayor would say that there is a gang problem, he would admit it, when we have parents that start admitting that their child is in the gang. We, you know, we can't have our mayor turn around and says there's a gang problem when we have family members, parents, that don't want to admit that their child are in the gang. When we have parents or family members that could say, well, my child was involved in the gang, you know, maybe our mayor could also say that there is a gang problem in our city. I just don't think that we should just put the blame on the Littlewood Police Department or our mayor. It takes the community to admit what's going on within our city when we say census murders. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Ross. Anyone else who also should address the council? Please come forward. State your name and address.
I'm Good evening.
Good evening.
I'm Brian O'Keehan, opening my name for the second. We have the major cities and Elizabeth Day, while the last thing, you and the city for the partnership and what the city has done to facilitate, clean area, pass, and as per city, we would like to let you remain fellow residents, those of you that are conducting the citizen science ozone project, all students monitoring, monitoring ozone and ground level. Small. The overall goal of the project is to value the demand of activity, actively engaging citizens, the listed, in ozone, monitoring by campus students in real time, air monitoring ozone, using a big site and two handheld personal ozone monitors. The NJDP New Jersey Department of Environmental Protection will partner with interested in designing a student ozone monitoring project. The project will take place from now until 2013. The final product will be an educational website that can be accessed by students via such as science interest and the website will be included, including educational instructions on how to implement an ozone monitoring project and will be managed by the NJDP. Now, the local executives are providing operational education on ozone, including, but I limited to, ozone monitoring, local qualifications, ozone exposure, production of personal ozone exposure, changes in activities that reduce ozone pollution and transfer, transmission. And possibly positively providing relationships between the urban community and the NJDP. Take your free time. And anyone has any questions, feel free to contact us at 908-659-0689.
Repeat the number here if you believe in that at all.
Okay. At 908-659-0689.
Thank you, Ms. Wallace. Anyone else who should address the council? Seeing none of those that wish to be. At this time, I ask that councilmentors who will step forward and present their presentation. Thank you.
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
Can I have all the coaches and the players come up? Chairman, you can be out your camera, you can be a president. And the president, all the coaches. Everybody up and down. Team mom, come on up.
Fly America.
Right.
Facing yours.
Good evening, everyone. It is a pleasure to be here today. It's an honor. Just want to give you a quick recap. Two years ago, baseball's been fading fast here in the city of Elizabeth. So two years ago, we had two organizations that decided to put their differences aside, their egos at the door. We have the president, Mr. Williams from North Elizabeth Baseball, and we have the president from Eastport, Little League, Mr. Jerry Jacobs. They decided that how can we make baseball more live here in the city of Elizabeth? So they decided again to come together and create one super all-star team. And boy, did they make a difference. They, I wish, I'm a coach of football, I wish we could do that here in Brooklyn. It would be so powerful. I just want to thank you guys for all that you do for the kids. I know you guys go above and beyond. I know you go in your pockets, you drive, they can pick up kids, you team moms, making these home ball Washington uniforms. This is what it's all about. So we, as city council, we just want to say thank you for what you do for the kids here in the city of Elizabeth, and we would like to give you the kids a foundation. Whereas the city of Elizabeth, the city council of Elizabeth, has learned of the outstanding accomplishments of Elizabeth Port Little League, who has rebounded to its days of glory and proudly presents Elizabeth as one of the top leagues in our area for youth baseball. The all-star team from this division captured the district seven championship after defeat in Bayonne by the score of seven to one on July 8. In Bayonne, Elizabeth, Elizabeth Port secured the sectional championship on July 20, 2014 by defeating Palisade Parks. And Leona Blyde scored 17 to four. Wow, that's amazing right there. So this win placed Elizabeth Port into the elite category. These guys were like two games away from the Little League World Series. That's a big accomplishment. I also want to thank the parents, thank you for your support, believing in your kids. Please give yourselves a round of applause. Good afternoon, parents. The way you go first, and then Mr. Jacobs go first. I'm going to say a couple words, and then you guys are going to present the kids with their.
We just want to say very quickly, thank the city of Elizabeth, always for this. Normally, when we reach out, you know, they're not on their face, they're always listening to what we got to say, always seem to be here to help us out on what we have. You know, I appreciate when I thank them. From the bottom of my heart, again, he said it all. It's not an easy job, you know, we do it because we love it. Thank you very much.
First, I'd like to thank Councilmentors, for giving us this opportunity to make sure I took my knowledge for such an achievement. I'd also like to thank Councilman Patricia Perkins, who has also been a staunch supporter of Little League for many, many years. Also, Councilman Manny Grover has been a staunch supporter as well. And I can't forget Mr. Bill Gollman, who of course is a little bit a staunch supporter of our movement. Seven years of office office president, at that time, Little League, Elizabeth Port Little League only had approximately eighty children. Today, we've grown over to three hundred children. And one other person I really want to acknowledge randomly is Mr. Sidney. That's all he's on, Mr. Sidney. Been involved in all aspects of youth advocacy for quite so many years. And it's been thirty-six years since Elizabeth Port has finally been, we did back in 1978. So we're glad to see that Mr. Sidney is here with us today for us to be able to see this today. Next, I'd like to thank all of my board members. Mr. Rich Williams, from North Elizabeth, Mr. Mike Jones, Mr. St. Leo Corres, Mr. Gerald Barnes, Mr. Gabriel Bianco, our guys, Mr. Shane Brown, and of course, Mr. St. Lee's Play Life, and also Rhonda the Play Life in the back. Without these people involved in our, and our parents and our coaches, but without these people involved in our organization, we wouldn't be here with our children to the level that we're able to achieve. Next, I'd like to thank these players here. Okay? These are our kids from here from Elizabeth. We may see certain things about our kids from Elizabeth or children from Elizabeth, but this shows what our children are capable of doing when they have the right guidance, they have the right facilities, they have the right people behind them. If we support our children in the endeavors that they would like to accomplish, we can show that they can accomplish things in this world and this life. And this was a perfect example of what these young men did, where they came from. Because let me tell you, when they were eight, nine years old, they were starting. We would even be twenty to nothing. Okay? And with them now, they make that full circle as they start getting to high school, as they start preparing themselves for things they are in their life. It's quite an opportunity and a great thing for our younger players to also look up to the fact that you can do it. Just because we're from Elizabeth means we can do it. We hope, we're glad that we have our partnership with North Elizabeth. We hope our neighbors across town hear us and realize that we need each other because we can be top gear. We can go to the States. We can go to the Angels as a united Elizabeth. I think I covered it. I covered everything. If I forgot anyone, as I always say, if I forgot anyone, please know, I thought I knew I thanked the parents too. Because without the parents, okay, we wouldn't be here. Without the support, it's hard to deal with it because I know I'm not easy. Thank you. Thank you. I know I'm not easy to deal with, so I thank you for the support. Thank you for telling me to remind, to thank the mayor, because the mayor and all of the council is always been a big staunch supporter of Elizabeth. What Little League and North Elizabeth baseball has allowed us to achieve what we have achieved. Like Nick Estes. Pedro Ramos. Xavier. Calvin Cologne. Javelle Speedy Horn. Gene Wess. And you better go with this. And Anthony Ricardo. Where's your tour? Wait, where's your tour? You missed one there. Sorry.
George Carr.
George Carr. Make sure the coaches bring these to the other two players that are not here today. And once again, now's the time. Parents, you guys can come up and take some pictures of your kids. Let's give them a nice round of applause. Like all the members of council come up. All the members of council come out. You guys are the players. Thank you, gentlemen. That's a good thing. It's important for everyone to know that at home, because as, as the coach said, it's easy to talk bad when kids are bad. When they do well, we all have to stand up and support them. So I thank you all for coming out, parents, coaches, and everyone else who has something to do with making sure these kids do well. Thank you very much. All right, we're going to resume our meeting. And at this time, I need a motion to go to the closed session, please. Just want to go back to Councilman Perkins. Justice, our second, go call please.
Councilwoman Perkins Dusty?
Aye.
Councilman Questa?
Aye.
Councilman Torres?
Aye.
Councilman Gonzalez?
Aye.
Councilman Keenan?
Aye.
Councilman Gollman?
Aye.
Councilman Mazza?
Aye.
President Grover?
Aye. The meeting needs to reset. We're going to the closed session.
Councilwoman Perkins Dusty?
Aye.
Councilman Questa?
Here.
Councilman Torres?
Here.
Councilman Gonzalez?
Here.
Councilman Keenan?
Aye.
Councilman Gollman?
Here.
Councilman Mazza?
Here.
President Grover?
Here. The members president, director, Castro, and Captain Pino, if you're joining us. All right, move on to public hearing.
Ordinance number 4497, amend chapter 10.12.15 of Dakota City of Elizabeth entitled
prohibited turns on red signal specifically to include Ward Tru Street in the Gay Act.
Heard reading ordinance 4497. Is there anyone from the public wishes to address the council on ordinance number 4497? I see none of those that wish to be.
Ordinance number 4499, ordinance to vacate the portion of Brighton Street from Palos West Street to Cole Place in accordance with meets and bounds required for the construction of a new elementary school.
Heard reading ordinance 4499. Anyone from the public wishes to address the council on ordinance 4499? I see none of those that wish to be.
Ordinance number 4500, grant an approach to permit to Arcadis U.S. in Pennsylvania to perform a landmark work consisting of three groundwater monitoring wells within the public right of way of Elizabeth Avenue and Sixth Street in the sidewalk area adjacent to 600 Elizabeth Avenue.
Heard reading ordinance 4500. Any member of the public wishes to address the council on 4500? I see none of those that wish to be.
Okay, the next ordinance is ordinance number 4501, 2, 3, and 4. Authorize establishment of personalized handicap parking spaces in front of 438 Fulton Street, 206 Clark Place, 319 South Park Street, and 164 Standish Street.
Heard reading ordinance 4501, 02, 03, 04. Is there any members of the public wishes to address the council on these ordinances? I see none of those that wish to be.
Ordinance number 4505, rescind ordinance number 4347 adopted November 27, 2012. Authorize establishment of personalized handicap parking space for George Martinez, 10 South Finest Street.
Heard reading ordinance 4505. Any member of the audience wishes to address the council on ordinance 4505? I see none of those that wish to be.
Ordinance number 4506, rescind ordinance number 3606, adopted March 23, 2004. Authorize establishment of personalized handicap parking space for Armando R. Ferrera, 240 Main Avenue.
Heard reading ordinance 4506. Any member of the audience wishes to address the council on the ordinance filed on 4506? I see none of those that wish to be. We're going to expect some reading petitions, some communication, and reports of civil officers who will move on to ordinances on first reading.
Ordinance number 4511, authorize establishment of personalized handicap parking space for Rose Marie Hudson, 502 Fulton Street.
Read every sentence.
Okay. Ordinance number 4512, 4513, and 4514, authorize establishment of personalized handicap parking spaces in 1019 Olive Street, 18 South 7th Street, and 426 South Finest Street.
We've heard ordinance, uh, read the ordinance 4511, 4512, 4513, and 4514. What is your pleasure, brother?
Heard reading for all, friend.
They've been moved in. Second, any comments? Go call.
Councilwoman Perkins Dusty?
Aye.
Councilman Questa?
Aye.
Councilman Torres?
Aye.
Councilman Gonzalez?
Aye.
Councilman Keenan?
Aye.
Councilman Gollman?
Aye.
Councilman Mazza?
Aye.
President Grover?
Aye. All orders passed on first reading. Public hearing further consideration for holding of the ordinance shall take place in the city council meeting on Wednesday, November 12, 2014, 7:30 p.m. Move on to ordinances on final passage.
Ordinance number 4497, amend chapter 10.12.15 of Dakota City of Elizabeth entitled prohibited turns on red signal specifically to include Ward Tru Street in the Gay Act.
Heard reading ordinance 4497. What is your pleasure?
Heard reading for all, friend.
They've moved in. Second, any comments? Go call.
Councilwoman Perkins Dusty?
Aye.
Councilman Questa?
Aye.
Councilman Torres?
Aye.
Councilman Gonzalez?
Aye.
Councilman Keenan?
Aye.
Councilman Gollman?
Aye.
Councilman Mazza?
Aye.
President Grover?
Aye. Orders passed on final.
Ordinance number 4499, amend ordinance to vacate the portion of Brighton Street from Palos West Street to Cole Place in accordance with meets and bounds required for the construction of a new elementary school.
Heard reading ordinance 4499. What is your pleasure?
Heard reading for all, friend.
Moved in. Second, any comments? Go call.
Councilwoman Perkins Dusty?
Aye.
Councilman Questa?
Aye.
Councilman Torres?
Aye.
Councilman Gonzalez?
Aye.
Councilman Keenan?
Aye.
Councilman Gollman?
Aye.
Councilman Mazza?
Aye.
President Grover?
Aye. Orders passed on final.
Ordinance number 4500, grant an approach to permit to Arcadis U.S. in Pennsylvania to perform a landmark work consisting of three groundwater monitoring wells within the public right of way of Elizabeth Avenue and Sixth Street in the sidewalk area adjacent to 600 Elizabeth Avenue.
Heard reading ordinance 4500. What is your pleasure?
Heard reading for all, friend.
Moved in. Second, any comments? Go call.
Councilwoman Perkins Dusty?
Aye.
Councilman Questa?
Aye.
Councilman Torres?
Aye.
Councilman Gonzalez?
Aye.
Councilman Keenan?
Aye.
Councilman Gollman?
Aye.
Councilman Mazza?
Aye.
President Grover?
Aye. Orders passed on final.
Ordinance numbers 4501, 2, 3, 4, 5. No, we're just going to go 1, 2, 3, 4. Authorize establishment of personalized handicap parking space for 438 Fulton Street, 206 Clark Place, 319 South Park Street, 164 Standish.
Heard reading ordinance 4501, 4502, 4503, 4504. What is your pleasure?
Heard reading for all, friend.
Moved in. Second, any comments? Go call.
Councilwoman Perkins Dusty?
Aye.
Councilman Questa?
Aye.
Councilman Torres?
Aye.
Councilman Gonzalez?
Aye.
Councilman Keenan?
Aye.
Councilman Gollman?
Aye.
Councilman Mazza?
Aye.
President Grover?
Aye. Orders passed on final.
Ordinance number 4501, rescind ordinance number 4347 adopted November 27, 2012. Authorize establishment of personalized handicap parking space for George Martinez, 10 South Finest Street.
Heard reading ordinance 4505. What is your pleasure?
Heard reading for all, friend.
Moved in. Second, any comments? Go call.
Councilwoman Perkins Dusty?
Aye.
Councilman Questa?
Aye.
Councilman Torres?
Aye.
Councilman Gonzalez?
Aye.
Councilman Keenan?
Aye.
Councilman Gollman?
Aye.
Councilman Mazza?
Aye.
President Grover?
Aye. Orders passed on final.
Ordinance number 4506, rescind ordinance number 3606 adopted March 23, 2004. Authorize establishment of personalized handicap parking space for Armando R. Ferrera, 240 Main Avenue.
Heard reading ordinance 4506. What is your pleasure?
Heard reading for all, friend.
Moved in. Second, any comments? Go call.
Councilwoman Perkins Dusty?
Aye.
Councilman Questa?
Aye.
Councilman Torres?
Aye.
Councilman Gonzalez?
Aye.
Councilman Keenan?
Aye.
Councilman Gollman?
Aye.
Councilman Mazza?
Aye.
President Grover?
Aye. Orders passed on final. Move on to the business.
Authorize corporate officials to commence with the competitive contract process for the procurement of the maintenance of fit terminal engine systems proprietary software, nonproprietary hardware. Authorize the award of contract to Arconic Systems LLC, long to New Jersey, for the maintenance importantly licensed for police computer assisted records management and dispatch systems, phone ware, ex-ovo clients, ex-ken, dad, ex-ware for the period July 1, 2014 through September 30, 2014, in the amount of $22,333.25. Authorize the award of contract to Ford, St. Paul's, Chicago, Illinois, for the purchase of long saw and ball. The department works under the unique patent requirement of purchasing contract for the period October 14, 2014 through October 14, 2015, and of course, under the C, $438,480. amend the resolution adopted July 22, 2014. Authorize the award of contract to Motorola Communications, Inc., for the purchase of communications equipment and accessories at cost under the C, $50,000 specifically to cover expenses from May 30 first, 2015, increasing the amount in additional $100,000. Adopt a resolution urging the government Adopt a resolution urging Governor Christie and the legislature to recognize and preserve the strength of local pension funding when considering the recommendations of the governor's pension and health and study commission. Authorizing void contract to David Fire Systems, Hackett, San Antonio, Jersey, for the purchase of fire alarm service, fire alarm services for barriers and apartments under the Union County Cooperative Purchase Contract for the period September 29, 2014 through October 7, 2014, at a cost of $200,000. Authorizing void contract to Matthews Lock and Safety Company, Elizabeth, for the purchase of lock spin services and lock hardware for barriers and fines under the Union County Cooperative Purchase Contract for the period September 5, 2014 through September 4, 2016, at a cost of $100,000. Authorizing void contract to Time Track Systems Corp., Iran, Michigan for the furnishing of time clock equipment maintenance and supplies for the period October 1, 2014 through September 30, 2015, at a cost of $15,000. Authorizing void contract to Bayer Ford, Lawrence County, New Jersey, for the purchase of 7, 2014 Ford police interceptor S U V vehicle under the Lawrence County Cooperative Pricing Council at a total cost of $202,26.25. Adopt a resolution exempting the school construction corporation from Chapter 8.148 entitled noise control to install a roof in Union South New Elizabeth High School located on East Jersey Street for the period November 6, 7, 2014, between the hours of 4 a.m. to 7 a.m. Authorizing public city officials to entry to an access agreement with Public Service Electric and Gas Company to perform additional subservice investigation and complete repairs to its underground electrical transmission lines adjacent to Department Public Works Maintenance Facility at 426 518 Atlanta Street.
Heard reading resolution, what is your pleasure?
Heard reading for both, brother.
They've been seconded, any comments? All right, I just wanted to let the council know, the reason why I allowed public service access permit agreements to be on the agenda is because I had a sense of conversation with Department of Public Works Director. Turns out that this work that has to be done is actually going to affect Newark Airport facilities. And, uh, I was assured by him and by representatives of D C G that they will be here within the next 30 days. So, I'd rather let's pull this on so we don't get punished or blamed for something that might... Roll call.
Councilwoman Perkins-Gastin.
Aye.
Councilwoman Questa.
Aye.
Councilwoman Torres.
Aye.
Councilwoman Gonzalez.
Aye.
Councilwoman Keenan.
Aye.
Councilwoman Gollman.
Aye.
Councilwoman Nazzan.
Aye.
President Corvina.
Aye, all resolutions passed.
Authorize planning board to conduct a study to determine whether the area located at 526 596 Industry Street and 525 597 Industry Street is in need of redevelopment and to appear redevelopment plan for said area to be paid by the redevelopment. Authorize planning board to conduct a study to determine whether the area located at 829 961 North Avenue, 827 907 North Avenue, 1001 1013 North Avenue, 1015 1027 North Avenue, and 1029 1061 North Avenue is in need of redevelopment and to appear redevelopment plan for said area at a cost of $35,480. Authorizing planning board to conduct a study to determine whether the area located at 20238 South Finest Street and 201 227 Butler Street is in need of redevelopment and to appear redevelopment plan for said area to be paid by the redevelopment. Authorizing void contract to H N S Construction and Mechanical, Inc., Elizabeth, for the installation of energy efficient building system improvement project in base bid plus ultimate amount of $107,057.
Heard reading resolution, what is your pleasure?
Heard reading for both, brother.
They've been seconded, any comments? Roll call.
Councilwoman Perkins-Gastin.
Aye.
Councilwoman Questa.
Aye.
Councilwoman Torres.
Aye.
Councilwoman Gonzalez.
Aye.
Councilwoman Keenan. Councilwoman Gollman.
Aye.
Councilwoman Nazzan.
Aye.
President Corvina.
Aye. Ladies. Try me, try me dead later.
Authorizing void contract to Alton Building Systems Corporation, Woodless, New Jersey for the roof mounted solar photowall tech project at a cost of $937,790. Authorizing void contract to Arco Electrical Contractors, Inc., trading as Arco Construction Group, Elizabeth, for the installation of energy efficient lighting project at base bid was of $581,667.10. Authorizing the void contract to Techcom Contractors, East Orange, New Jersey for the Elizabeth Bike Way Atlantic Wallway Rehabilitation Project at a cost of $768,605. Establish handicap parking spaces in front of the premises located at 152 Clark Place and 29 Year Street, 187 Avenue. Delete the following handicap parking spaces from front of the premises located at 328 Franklin Street, 655 Upper Staten, pay utility bills, prove bingo, and rental licenses.
Heard reading resolution, what is your pleasure?
Heard reading for both, brother.
They've been seconded, any comments? Roll call.
Councilwoman Perkins-Gastin.
Aye.
Councilwoman Questa.
Aye.
Councilwoman Torres.
Aye.
Councilwoman Gonzalez.
Aye.
Councilwoman Keenan.
Aye.
Gollman.
Aye.
Councilwoman Nazzan.
Aye.
President Corvina.
Aye, all resolutions passed. Uh, we have commendations for Manny Corrigan Jr., Carmarthen Rivera, George Castro, who was honored by Boy Scouts America 2014.
And also, Mr. President.
Hold on, let me read these in the notes. Boy Scouts America 2014 Service Award, and the Card, they have some general was getting his Eagle Scout Award. Is there any other commendations?
Yes, Mr. President.
Yes.
Could you do one more and add extra for, um, another one for the legacy?
It's in December.
Yes, yes, December 3rd.
Yes. Memorials, we have Chiaha, Chiaha, Markeen Chapman, Antonio Nitti, Elizabeth Mania, and Andrew Smith. Any other memorial?
Yes, Mr. President.
I don't think you have.
Everybody, why not say? Any other memorial? Ask everyone, please, write us a memorial.